I would like to call the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Ms. Johnson, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas is absent, and Mayor Anderson.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Item number three, prayer and pledge. Commissioner Butler, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Lord, our meeting today took matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in this period of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Ledeslas to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of the agenda and executive session announcements.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to add, new business item 10B, discuss or take action on city manager resignation.
I'll amend my motion to allow. I'll second.
First and second for the amended motion, all in favor?
We'll call roll call with Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number five, public hearings. There are none tonight. Item number six, citizens' comments.
We have one tonight, Ms. Julie Fisher.
Hello, my name is Julie Fisher. I live at 7276 Northwest Highway. Words cannot express the revulsion I feel by what I witnessed in this very room Tuesday evening at the November 15th Planning Commission meeting, all of which I plan to share with you tonight, is public record, and I have copies if you'd like to verify this. Two items were brought before the commission for consideration on Tuesday's meeting. Resolution PC 6622, annexation of Woodwick Phase 2, 5.3 acres, map 021, parcel 056.0, property owner Candlewood Cove LLC, and resolution PC 6722, rezoning of that same plot, Woodwick Phase 2, 5.38 acres, map 021, parcel 056, property on a Candlewood Farm, I'm sorry, Candlewood Cove LLC. According to public record, this particular parcel of land was recently sold to Candlewood Cove by Jingo Building Group LLC, which is owned by committee chairman and Board of Commissioner Brandon Butler. Furthermore, Ms. Anderson, your newly-elected mayor, who also holds a seat on the planning committee, publicly admitted that she received a donation from a developer who is an old and dear friend of hers. According to public record, that donation and developer is the owner of Candlewood Cove LLC, and the donation was a considerable $1,600. During the meeting, Mr. Butler and Mrs. Anderson disclosed this information, nor did they recuse themselves from the vote, and voted in favor of the developer on both resolutions. I feel, as I'm sure many of Fairview citizens do, that these actions were unethical and abuse of power and borderline criminal. In light of this event, I find it difficult to believe that these public officials have the citizens' best interest at heart. I beg of this Board of Commissioners not to allow this unethical misuse of power to continue to cast a shadow of mistrust over future actions of this board. It's too late for my neighborhood on Northwest Highway to be saved, as the last Board of Commissioners has allowed and continues to allow the developer to have his way at the expense of the people who already live there. I hope bringing this to the forefront will save the neighborhoods that people have moved to Fairview to be a part of. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to address some statements, please. I know Mrs. Fisher and her daughter have spread several rumors about me and continue to do so. I seek legal counsel before that vote. I have no ownership or financial interest in that parcel.
Ma'am, this isn't a dialogue.
I have no current ownership or financial record. You've never reached out to me to ask a question. I'll be happy to meet with you and talk to you about it, or anyone else that has any questions. You can file an ethics complaint. You could do that, whatever you would like, but I'm simply, what you're stating is improper.
Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions.
Good evening. Just want to thank everyone for coming out this past Saturday for the veteran celebration. Huge thank you to Mr. Dodaro and the Veterans Committee, and everyone that put this event on. It was very successful. We would also like to remind everyone that on December 3rd, we have the tree lighting event here at City Hall, along with the Tinsel Tree Trail, and then December 10th is the Christmas Parade. And the Christmas Parade begins at 4:30 PM. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, planning report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, the staff, the monthly report for the plant department. We've had permits this month, three accessory structures, one demolition. You're aware, we've been working to clear some of those for some time. We're glad to see those permits start picking up a little bit. One grading permit, no non-residential permits, one pool, three new residential constructions, no mobile homes, three residential renovations or additions, no temporary structures, and one commercial sign permit. So relatively slow month for us permitting-wise, rather busy month plan review-wise. Obviously, people are gearing up for first of the year. While the permitting process is a little bit slower, the permitting for the month is slow, certainly the activities on the plant department are not. So we continue to be busy in that department. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Item B, finance report.
Yes, Mayor, I have in front of you the information for the finance report for the month. A couple of things to go over, and then one kind of interesting item. You'll see at the top of the page, our general fund operating account has $4,167,000 in it. At the bottom of the page, on the capital account, we have $1,193,000. You may recall that we recently received the second half of our ARPA, or federal funds, that we're going to be using for stormwater, our stormwater management. That was amount of $1,362,000. So the operating balance of $4,167,000, a million three of that will go down to capital for stormwater, as has been previously described in Plan 4 since we knew we were going to get that money. That leaves the operating balance in the general fund just under $3 million, which for the City of Fairview to be here in November with $3 million in its general fund checking account is something I don't think I've seen in my time here. That's a great report for us. We're glad to have it. Two items of information specific to the financials. Number one, we did receive this month the largest amount we've received in the online betting distribution. The legislature passed two years ago the legality for online betting. We get a small percentage of that. That has been around $400 a month. At the highest this month was $3,200. So as long as the online betting are going, we have a little bit of unrealized or unrecognized revenue that's kind of entertaining for us, but I'm sure we'll put it to good use. And then on the last page, you'll see the local government investment pool statement. That's our reserve fund statement. The balance on that is $1,260,000. You may recall that our reserve fund is separate from our general fund operating. We set that up a couple of years ago. We remain, as of tonight, we remain a little over four years ahead of schedule of funding our reserve fund, which is good news for us and good news for the city. Better news for the city is the fact that we've had our highest interest rate, our highest interest earned on the money for the month. We were credited with $3,158, which was a rate of 2.95%, and historically, that's been less than half of a percent. Obviously, interest rates have gone up, and that's changed our numbers a little bit. But that was an honest little bump in our balance for the month. On our reserve fund and our cash balances appear to be whole. We are in the process of getting ready to close out the second, or closing the first half months of the year. Once that information is complete, then the staff will be prepared to complete the amended budget for the board. Be glad to answer any questions you have on any operating expenditures, cash balances, or any other things regarding the financials.
Any questions from the board for the finance report? Item C, Public Works Report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, Public Works Report. Just one thing for you tonight. You may recall that the chipper service historically ends in October. We terminate the chipper service and go into the leaf service. That has been extended through the month of November. We've worked through the storm debris to the extent that the city could pick up. We'll continue to run the routes for the remainder of the month. We're also distributing and collecting the leaf bags. You may recall that we provide up to five leaf bags at a time to pick the leaves up. We have done some of that. We just ordered a new additional leaf bags. We have a pallet of those at Public Works. We have some of those at City Hall. So if anyone needs any of those, they're welcome to come pick those up at either spot. We'll continue to run the chipper service through the month, but we believe we're substantially caught up on all the chipper work outside of some odd thing that comes up for the remainder of the year. That's all I have on Public Works.
Any questions from the board on the Public Works Report? Item D, City Manager Report.
Yes, Mayor, only one thing for you tonight, just as an update. You may recall I sent an email out to all of you regarding an update on the playground fence. We have secured the estimate for the installation of the fence. We also previously had the estimate for the playground material itself. Earlier today, I did submit the order for the engraved pickets, so the vendor has those. They've acknowledged receipt of that and let us know that they have that. We submitted that on their format, so they have that information. The engraving of those will start next week. They've told us that they expect a turnaround time for the entire fence package within the next two weeks or so. As soon as they get the engraving done, they have all the items in stock. As one matter, so that everyone will understand what we're doing with the fence, the requirements for a playground fence, the height requirements are 48 inches. There's a standard that goes with a fence of that type for ADA and ASTM requirements. The initial plan was to install the fence along the top of the concrete border of the playground. But having the installation vendors come out and look at that, there was a bit of concern about the longevity of being able to lag those bolts into the concrete and have that fence there the way we need it to be. So rather than purchase 48-inch posts and have them installed there, the pickets themselves actually should be 57 inches. They'll be a little longer than the standard, and they will be installed outside of the border of the concrete into the ground. The 57-inch installation will allow us to be 48 inches from the playing service, the plate, the top of the concrete, to the top of the fence, so we'll meet the requirements. But the fence will be installed outside of the concrete. The mooring posts for those are nine feet long, so there'll be plenty of room to install those in the ground, secure all that we need for the pickets there to make the fence not only attractive but secure as well. So as soon as those get in, it'll be ready for installation. I included Mr. Paisley Keith on the submission of all that information today. He's also included on all the information from the vendor for installation. So once we get that information in, he'll be prepared to move forward or provide the information we need for the installation. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have regarding the fence or any other items.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for city manager?
Mayor, the entrance and stuff kind of fall in line with that.
Yes, sir. The only thing that we're, that will need, that will need to be done differently is, you may recall that on the, what we call the backside of the fence, or the playground, or the area, the entrance closest to the nature center, there's an open space there. I had pretty lengthy discussions with the fence picket provider for that. Their concern, if we use their material for a gate, is that the weight of that gate is going to be substantial, and they don't think there's going to be the ability for that to hold. So they are sending us one of the samples, the full samples of the material. The only thing that will need to be done will be install a gate. It won't be the same material as what the fencing material is, but they don't think that's going to hold up for the use of the gate. That gate's going to be about 10 feet in width. They don't think their material's going to be able to do that. So my suggestion will be a two-door gate. They suggested something of an iron material. It would be a little more durable, but something you could use that would be similar to the metal components of the playground itself. So that's not going to be an issue. It should all fit and flow the way it needs to, and it can tie into the fence itself.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Item nine, consent agenda.
To approve.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Ms. Johnson, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10, new business. Item 10A, Resolution 37-22, Resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Designating a Vehicle as Surplus and Authorizing Its Disposal, 2010 Ford Escape.
To approve. Second.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10B, discussion and/or action, city manager resignation.
I added to the agenda. I'm not really sure how we got here. We went from a resignation to June, to amended resignation yesterday for December of next year. I think that we have to formally accept the resignation order for it to be in effect. And then I was approached about the possibility of a discussion of an immediate termination or immediate relief. I'm informed that I think both parties are interested. So I added tonight, we either accept the resignation for the next December or have some discussion. I talked to Mr. Potter a little bit about it today. I don't know if he has any feedback or discussion into further opportunities.
You want to make the motion, and we'll discuss.
I make him, well, I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Potter to hear further what the motion needs to be.
Well, obviously, Mr. Collins has a contract with the city, and Mr. Collins has an obligation to give 60 days' notice of a resignation. Otherwise, he can be terminated, but if he's terminated without cause, then the city has a buyout obligation to him under his contract. I think currently it's 18 months. I know that Mr. Collins submitted a letter of resignation to the city, giving notice to the city, I don't know, maybe what, maybe two weeks ago, something like that.
October 26th.
Maybe three weeks ago, giving notice to the city that he intended to stay employed as your city manager through the end of the fiscal year, which would end on June 30 of 2023. That was never formally accepted, and I talked to Mr. Butler about that. I think that when an employee says that they are intending to resign on a certain date, they can later say, well, I prefer to resign on a later date. And subsequent to that, he sent the city, I think a couple of days ago, a letter advising this board that he intended to resign as of December 22 of 2023. So that's the only real resignation letter before you, because you didn't vote to accept the first one. Now, beyond that, you have certain rights as a board. You could, you can terminate Mr. Collins' services at any time, but if you do that, then there's a buyout obligation that you will be obligated to pay to him unless he's being terminated for cause. I haven't heard any allegation of cause. But that's where we're at right now, Mr. Butler. So now, I don't know. I know that Mr. Collins may have had some private discussions with one or more of you individually about what he would like to do. So anything that the parties do by agreement can be done. So if Mr. Collins was willing to accept X amount of months severance and leave immediately, that could be done. I think what I would recommend in that regard, just for everybody, I think that a mutual release agreement would be appropriate about the city and Mr. Collins, so that the city can start fresh. But, you know, you certainly have the right to propose something, and Mr. Collins can either agree to it or he won't, and that's kind of where we're at.
Mr. Butler.
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, I'll make this easy for you. I assume I'll make this easy for you. You can determine whether or not it is easy. As I've stated before, and as I intimated to you in an email earlier today, the inclusion of 18 months worth of buyout in my contract was a precautionary measure for myself and the city. And I think I've been clear on that with all that I've spoken to. I think I've been clear also with all that I've spoken to that I have not made any effort to negotiate an 18-month buyout. In fact, the opposite of that has been true. I have not approached anyone about any effort to have a buyout enforced. I've not asked for that. I've not proposed that. I've not suggested it. Those conversations have come to me, and that's perfectly fine and normal. I get that. So in effort of that, I'm not in any way attempting to penalize the city. I believe you should have an opportunity to move forward with that. So what I would offer to you as a point of that tonight is to cut those 18 months in half to nine months. So my response is nine months. I have about 80 hours of vacation time. I'd like to get those 80 hours, and then my four days for this week. So it'll be nine months plus 80 hours plus four days. If the board offers a motion in a second and that resolution passes, I have already prepared everything internally for the city to be able to facilitate that tonight. In fact, Mr. Dougherty is in his office right now finalizing that paperwork. So it will be done by about 7:45, depending on when the board votes on this. So that will be my proposal. Again, cutting that buyout in half, I think, is fair. That's intermediate or close to what the original resignation date was. So my proposal is nine months plus my 80 hours of vacation and four days this week. And that would be effective when I leave the building tonight?
Okay, so when you leave the building tonight, that's it. So, Mr. Potter, are you going to write this up in a contract tonight, or?
I can't get a contract done tonight, but I can, we can do a, tomorrow, we can prepare a mutual release agreement that can be signed by you, Mayor, and by Mr. Collins, and then we could...
And I would state on the record, I'm agreeable to that. I'm in no way, ever serial to that.
And then Mr. Dougherty could tender the funds.
And since we were informed that Mr. Dougherty is now the assistant city manager, he would just assume the role as...
He could, I think.
Our interim?
He could, but I think probably you would need to, you would need to formally designate him the interim city manager.
Under the city's charter, the Board of Commissioners only has supervisory authority over a city manager. So that will be a city manager or an interim. An assistant city manager is a staff person under which the board does not, or over which the board does not have that authority. So my suggestion to you is that's the method that you choose. I would encourage you to take some action on that. Then you could name that person as an interim, there where you do have some ability to do that.
Is that something we would vote on tonight?
You should. I would say, Mayor, that it would, the suggestion would be, here's the steps. If the board's so inclined, it would accept Mr. Collins's proposal subject to also both parties executing a severance release. And then in a subsequent vote, you would vote to appoint Mr. Dougherty as your interim city manager pending the, pending further appointment by the board. And then we need to have a discussion about a city manager search and how that's going to work, so.
I think that discussion probably would be better served with the new board.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Dougherty is, I've not seen or spoken with him or anything. He's aware of all this that's going on?
I've not spoken to him about it.
I saw him in the building, so...
I've spoken to him with it, with him about it at length, and he is prepared to proceed as soon as I tell him to proceed.
And one other, so this would be a resignation, not a termination, and there will be something in the contract that the city's held harmless? No lawsuits against city employees, city commissioners, BOC members, current or past?
Yes, ma'am.
So does Mr. Dougherty have, like, all the passwords and everything he would need to move forward if you're gone?
Yes. As I've stated before, I've, there's some belief out there, which is completely false, that there is some effort for some negative activity to take place with the city beyond that. I think all of you know me better than that. I would hope you do. That's the only insulting part I've had of this. But with that, yes, every function of the city is protected to move forward. I've built it so that it's successful. I've built it so that it's successful.
Well, I wasn't talking about it being protected. I just wanted to make sure that if there was something he needed to access, that he would have access to it.
Everyone has full access to everything that they need.
Mr. Butler, Mr. Dawson, do you all have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner, sorry.
I just want to make it very clear that I was excited for the opportunity to have you further as we transition, and I'm very appreciative of the hard work that you have put to us. I think that I only pursue this or consider pursuing this just because I feel I believe that's what you would prefer. But I'm very grateful for all the time and effort that you've given to Fairview and working so hard for us. I just want to make sure you know that. Mr. Potter, could you help me create a motion that would account for the nine months, 80 hours, four days, or I can make an attempt, and you can tell me if?
I just think that it should be worded that a motion to accept the voluntary separation agreement to pay our city manager severance equal to nine months of his salary plus four days, and that to pay him his 80 hours of accrued vacation time, that the severance, mutual severance agreement would also include a mutual release agreement between the city and Mr. Collins, and that Mr. Collins would obviously cooperate with this seamless transition. I'll put all that into the agreement. Jennifer Foster and I will work on that, so.
That is my motion.
Do we need to make a separate motion about Mr. Doherty?
That would be a separate action, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so how would we handle that since the only thing we added to the agenda was city manager resignation?
Well, this is kind of an emergency event, so I think that you can, once we do this, somebody can make a motion to amend the agenda to, to appoint, to discuss appointment of an interim city manager because we need a city manager.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have, the motion is stated on the Board and a second. Ms. Johnson, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
I'd like to say something, Mayor, if I could. And Mr. Collins, I would like for you to hear this, but I know you're walking out there. But Mr. Collins hired me to be the city attorney in April of 2017, so I've had an opportunity to observe the operation of the city very intimately now for five and a half years. He is an excellent city manager, and I say that because I have, our firm represents a number of municipalities. I have also served as president of the Tennessee County Attorneys Association. So I have seen how city management operates. Scott Collins is, from everything I've observed, has been an excellent city manager. He's done it with integrity, and City of Fairview seems to be a whole lot better off now than it was when I was hired as city attorney, and that's in large part due to what he has done. So, you know, I've enjoyed working with him, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, so we're going to add item, under New Business, item 10C, which is the approval of Mr. Doherty as the Assistant City Manager to become our interim city manager.
Yes, ma'am. I think that we first need a motion to amend the agenda to add action item on appointment of interim city manager. So if we could do that, then someone can make that motion. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Motion to amend the agenda to add item 10C under New Business to make the appointment of interim city manager.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Tom Doherty interim city manager.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, can you call the roll, please?
Can I just ask one thing? So this wasn't discussed. I'm presuming that Mr. Doherty will be paid accordingly. I'm not sure what he's paid now, but is it the will of the Board to pay him, for him to continue his current salary? Are we adjusting that in any way? I don't know. And I haven't spoken to Mr. Doherty.
Do we know what his salary is?
I don't know.
I don't either.
Let's, let's don't address that tonight, then. Let's don't open that can of worms. We can maybe talk to him about that. I don't know how long he'll serve in this role, but that might be something that we want to discuss with him.
That's proper.
He'll be obviously taking on more responsibility, but we'll have that discussion.
Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Thank you.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item number 11, Communication from the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Man, change, inevitable, difficult, exciting, all the above. I want to congratulate Leslie Street, Wayne Hall, on their appointment to the Board of Commissioners. Also wanted to congratulate Mayor Lisa Anderson to her position as mayor. I want to thank the City of Fairview for allowing me to serve for the past three years. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to congratulate Mr. Hall and Ms. Fisher Street as well for being elected to the Board. I look forward to working with both of you. We had a really tight race. I want you to know that I have the highest admiration for Commissioner Dawson. We've been friends for a long time, and I didn't win by much. He has done a great job on this Board, and I'm very sad to see him go. I just want you to know that I thank the world of you, and I just want you to be blessed and have just a wonderful future.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I appreciate all of your support that I've had over the years. I think we've worked really well together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 12, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We're adjourned.